What I think.
Let me say good evening to all of us on tonight. Welcome to the Muskogee Municipal Authority Agenda for October 23rd, 2023. We will have the invocation by trustee Tracy McGee followed by the flag salute. Let us stand.
Let us all bow our hearts and minds for a moment of prayer. Oh gracious Father, thank you for your grace and your mercy. Father, we ask you tonight that you really ease our hearts and minds, Father. Let your will be done. We know that you are the reason. We pray that each one of us up here keep the citizens first and foremost at hand. We ask all these blessings in your only begotten son, Yeshua. Let us all say amen.
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 Let's look to the flag. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Hoos.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Perlin Boyati Craig.
Here.
Patrick Cale.
Here.
Thank you. Item number one.
Consider approval of MMA minutes of September 25th, 2023, or take other necessary action.
We have the minutes in our packet on tonight. As said, do we have any corrections to those minutes or a motion to approve?
No. Approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number one's minutes. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Perlin Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item passes. Item number two.
Consider approval of MMA claims for the month ending September 30th, 2023, or take other necessary actions.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, you have before you the claims for the MMA. It does include the reserve for capital projects and the transfer of funds. We do recommend approval and happy to answer any questions.
We have heard the presentation from Mr. Miller. Do we have any discussion on the claims? Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number two. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Perlin Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number two passes. That concludes that meeting. We will order the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority meeting for October 23rd, 2023. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Hoos.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Perlin Boyati Craig.
Here.
Patrick Cale.
Here. Thank you. Item number one.
Consider approval of minutes of September 25th, 2023, or take other necessary actions.
Said minutes are in the packet on tonight. Do we have any questions on the minutes?
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second on the minutes. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Perlin Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number one passes. Item number two.
Consider approval of MRA claims for September 16th, 2023, through October 13th, 2023, or take other necessary actions.
Claims are in the packet. Mr. Miller may have a comment if he needs to. Do we have any discussion about the claims? Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second on the claims. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Perlin Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item passes. Item number three.
Consider approval of the adoption of MRA Policy 1-1, Prohibition on Election Activity for Employees, or take other necessary actions.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, the Muskogee City Charter, Article 9, General Provisions, Section 902, Prohibitions and Activities Prohibited states, "No appointive officer or employee drawing salary or other compensation of the city shall take part in any campaign for the nomination or election of city officers or engage in political activity in any form in connection with such nomination and election." The charter is the highest rules that the city can possibly make. It's that charter rules apply to all city employees. I've been asked whether that charter rule applies to employees of the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority after consulting with our city attorney. It's been determined that it does not. In 2019, the MRA adopted several city policies, but city policies do not include this charter provision. So I've been asked to draft this policy. That is in your packet and uses the exact wording of the charter, except adds the words "MRA", to see whether the MRA trustees would like the MRA employees to fall under the exact same charter provisions and policy provisions as every other city employee falls under the charter. So that is what I've been asked to prepare. That is prepared for your consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Do we have any questions from this body?
I do, Mayor. May I be recognized?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm glad that Mike Miller read that because just want to make it clear that this is a trust. And the trust is governed by the bylaws and also governed by the indenture. Your charter is governed with the city council. I want to make sure everybody understand that because you might not. This was laid up here as a correction. And when it was laid up a correction, I'm just saying three of my colleagues to my right asked what it was. So I just think that as a trustee, an independent company of the city, as a beneficiary, there's no other authority that practiced that. I also think that we are being directional. And the reason I say that because we only have one employee of the MRA. And the only reason why you have that employee is before liquor license. Okay? And so to bring over what's going on from the charter, I think it is a direct attack upon the one employee. And the reason I say that part is for when employee comes to a manager and asks for direction or asks if this is possible and the manager then in turn create or bring forth this change so that the employee cannot run for office. I think it's unfair. I don't believe it's right. You know that this is what happened and I don't think that we should be practicing like that. I think it violates his civil rights. I think it also, we have a right as a democracy, you have the right to vote. You have a right to run for an office. And you have a right to support whomever you choose to support. That is your right. And I don't think that we should infringe upon that. I think that when someone come to you and ask you things, I don't think you go behind them and do this without at least sitting and talking. And I think that this should have been discussed with the MRA trustees before this is brought forth. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. McGee. Do we have any other comments on item number three?
Yeah, yes, sir, I do.
Yes. Mr. Cale.
Our current employee, John Cruz at the Civic Center, I happen to think highly of. Having said that, this is good policy. Having said that, one of the scenarios, this is just one scenario. I might add that we haven't been very good employers over the course of our last two gentlemen with economic development and Mr. Cruz at the Civic Center. We haven't been good employers, haven't given good leadership. Part of the reason we've made mistakes, part of the reason that we gave a huge golden parachute to our economic development guy, part of the reason that he's suing us is because we haven't been good employers. It's part of the reason, haven't made good decisions. I've thought up several scenarios, notwithstanding our new guy. Let's say we've got next year a lady named Mary Margaret. She's in charge of Civic Center. If I decide I want to run in Ward Three and Mary Margaret decides she wants to run in Ward Three and Mary Margaret's got a real aggressive campaign manager and they start putting out falsehoods and baloney and what have you on one of the city councilmen, primarily the guy they're running against. I can see where it could get pretty dicey with a council member having an employee dog him and put falsehoods out and what have you. Now, maybe some on the city council think that he's gone overboard or she has gone overboard, Mary Margaret. We need to fire Mary Margaret. That's not right what she's done to Patrick. It's not cool. It's no good. No bueno. So five of us decide to fire Mary Margaret. Now, Mary Margaret sues the council, sues the city because of undue firing. There has to be separation. They have to be an employee. Our current person there is under the umbrella, city employees, MRA employees, not wanting to pick on anybody. This is good policy and I think it would benefit us to follow good policy and try to always follow good policy.
Thank you, Mr. Cale. Other discussions or what's the pleasure of this body?
May I be recognized?
You may.
I agree with Tracy. It is one employee and it's one employee that is singled out that is different from the city. The Civic Center is still a city entity and it should abide by the same rules and continuation that the city employees have. It is one individual and one individual shouldn't be allowed to do something completely different from what the city is doing.
Thank you. Other comments?
Yes, sir. May I be recognized again, Mr. Mayor?
You may.
The MRA, being the trust, I do believe that, Mr. Miller, you're responsible for moving Mr. John Cruz up under the MRA. Is that correct?
So, yes, originally when the state alcohol laws changed, the city could no longer hold an alcohol license, but a trust could. We moved Mr. Cruz to be an employee of the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority for the express purpose of making sure that we could operate the Civic Center as we have traditionally. And that involved moving him and working with benefits and doing a whole lot of things to make sure that he was treated as a city employee and had the same benefits and had the same opportunities as a city employee as best we could while being an MRA employee so that we could retain the alcohol license. And if, well, I'm sorry, I feel like I answered your question, ma'am.
You have.
Thank you.
Now, we have several trusts here in the city of Muskogee. Is that correct?
We do.
Okay. So Derek Reed, I hate to put you on the spot, but we're going to use you as an example because that's what was given to me. Derek Reed worked for a trust, right? And that trust do business with the city of Muskogee. It's called the Nonprofit Center, correct?
The Nonprofit Resource Center is not a city trust.
I know it's not a city trust, but it gets city money. Is that correct?
We have a contract with the Nonprofit Resource Center to provide grant writing assistance.
Okay.
I don't believe that Mr. Reed is paid to write grants on behalf of the city.
No, Mr. Reed is not paid to write grants. The Resource Center is. My point is that he works for a trust that does business with the city of Muskogee. That's my point. And let me finish, please.
I just wanted to make sure that's clear. I'll be quiet. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mike. And I'm saying that this isn't a trust as well, okay? And this trust is an independent from the city of Muskogee. We only the beneficiary as we are with all of our trusts, correct? So all I'm saying is that if you're going to do one for what you do for one, you should do for all and you should never single out someone. Because what you're doing now, you're applying charter provisions to the MRA employee. So now you have to adopt this in because this is not something that you normally would do. Is that not correct? So I'm just saying, as a trust, as a trust with its own business, now you're going to come mix the city in with it and that is illegal to do so.
So I would not have brought something forward that is illegal. I don't believe our city attorney would have let me bring something forward that is illegal. I have faith in her that she would provide me some guardrails. This is an MRA trustee decision on whether they want to adopt a policy that mirrors what the charter applies to every other employee of the city. Again, as you pointed out, the city Civic Center manager would be a city employee if it were not for the alcohol laws of the state of Oklahoma. And so it's up to this body to make the choice whether to apply that this policy which mirrors the charter provisions. It doesn't make the charter apply. It makes a policy in and of itself from this body that mirrors the charter provisions that says the employees of the Civic Center should follow the same charter provisions or the same provisions against participating in elections as every other city employee. That is the intent.
Thank you, Mike.
That's the intent for this body to consider whether that is what the policy that they want to adopt.
I think that we've all had a nice opportunity to have this discussion. I'm going to motion to close discussion.
I'd like to make one last observation.
I'm going to motion, please, Mr. Cale, close discussion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to close discussion. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Perlin Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
No.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, accordingly, the motion to discussion will now only be able to entertain a actual motion one way or the other on this agenda item. Do we have a motion?
I have a motion. We strike it.
We have a motion that the agenda ought to be stricken. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Again. Do we have a second? We do not. Motion dies for lack of a second. I move that we approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Excuse me. No more further discussion. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Perlin Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
No.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. That will conclude that meeting. We will now move to the Muskogee City Council Agenda for October 23rd, 2023. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Hoos. Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Perlin Boyati Craig.
Here.
Patrick Cale.
Here.
Thank you. We will now consider approval of the minutes for City Council Regular Agenda September 25th, 2023. The minutes are in our packet. Do we have any comments on the minutes or do we have a motion to approve?
I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the minutes. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Perlin Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. We will now consider the consent agenda. Items one through nine, do any items need to be moved to the regular agenda or do we have a motion to approve as presented?
Move for approval.
Motion and a second on the consent agenda. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Perlin Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Excuse me, Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, we will now go to item 10.
Hold a public hearing and consider approval of ordinance number 4207A to rezone property located at 3614 West Donwolke from C1 Local Commercial to C2 General Commercial. And if approved, authorize staff to revise the official zoning map of the city to reflect said change or take other necessary actions.
We will now open the public hearing. Mr. King, you moved.
Change seats on you this evening. Good evening, council. So this item, we saw back at the works two weeks ago. It is a request to rezone from C1 Local Commercial to C2 General Commercial for the purpose of taking a old car wash and to turn it into a tire shop. These are some images of the old tire shop. That is vacant, abandoned, so this would be a great move for development for this piece of property. I'm sorry. The current use was C1 as a car wash. Proposed use is C2 for a tire shop. And so staff recommends that we approve the ordinance and I'll take any questions.
No residents have signed up to speak to this item. We will now close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of this body?
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Perlin Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number 11.
Receive report from the Muskogee City County Port Authority regarding their industrial development activities on behalf of the city of Muskogee and take other necessary actions.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of council. We have a contractual agreement with the Port Muskogee to conduct industrial development activities on behalf of the city to encourage job growth and capital investment. They do come before us from time to time to update us on their activities and how well they're doing. We really appreciate them being here tonight. I'll turn it over to Heather and let her take it from here.
Thank you, Mike. Mayor Coleman, esteemed council, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. As Mike said, my name is Heather McDowell and I am the new Director of Economic Development at Port Muskogee. I've been here a little over two months now and extremely excited to be here with you tonight. On this first slide, what I really want to discuss.
Can I interrupt you for just one moment?
Yes.
So council, we're having some technical difficulties with your monitors here. I would like to point out, our staff is obviously working on that, but I'd like to point out, we have a fancy new monitor over here that you can see slightly better on this wall than previous. I know some of you have a better angle than others. So pardon me for interrupting, but I wanted to make both those points, but please go ahead. I'm sorry.
All right. Thank you, Mike. As you see on this, this is our approach to industrial and economic development and we do that through various means. One is our existing business development. We know that the majority of new job growth and capital investment is going to come from existing business and we handle that by targeted industry visits, which oftentimes lead to local expansion announcements. It's important for us to know what our business climate is and get a pulse for that in the community. And we also do that through our Greater Muskogee Manufacturing Alliance, or GMMA, where we have quarterly meetings, where we have face-to-face interactions with our local manufacturers as well as relevant content programming that were programs that were directly assessing or in meeting the needs of our local businesses. We do this through workforce development and I'm going to get into that in some future slides, but I will tell you, there's been a huge pendulum shift since I started in this journey in economic development in Chamberworld in 2009. When I first got into this industry, workforce and economic development, we're not housed under the same area. There's been this pendulum shift in the last five or six years where workforce development and economic development definitely go hand in hand. We do this through new industry recruitment. You'll hear me talk about RFPs, or Request for Proposals. These are our competitive opportunities to bid on projects where we bring companies to Muskogee. We get those opportunities through the Department of Commerce, through regional partners, through sometimes through our utility companies. Sometimes those companies come directly to us, but that is where we submit and basically sell Muskogee and try to get those companies to come into town. We also work with professional development organizations such as Select Oklahoma where we have the opportunity to meet with other economic development professionals as well as sometimes they bring in site consultants. We work with the Department of Commerce and our legislature and make sure that we know what our business climate is not only for the area but for the state as a whole. And then we do this through private meetings with site consultants. In fact, I had a site consultant call in earlier this month where I had the opportunity to meet with 22 face-to-face visits with site consultants to talk about not only the type of companies that they represent but to sell Muskogee. And then Jeff's going to get into this a little later. He'll talk about infrastructure for growth and site readiness and the importance of that. And then look at advanced markets. It's important for us to continue to grow our local economic base and diversify our economy here locally. Tips Market Strategy out of Austin came in and did a study and they have outlined to us that aerospace, energy tech, technology-based companies, as well as EV and battery might be some space that Muskogee could attract and fully be able to handle and represent. And then last port, I've worked in a lot of communities. Very few communities have a river. A lot of communities can say they have railroad and runway or what we call airports, but very few can say they have a port. It's important for us to continue to grow and expand our port as well as to make continuous upgrades and leverage that as a competitive asset. Moving right along, we talked about RFPs. We currently have 41 active RFPs open. I heard from our regional partners, we are having a record-breaking year in the amount of companies that are looking to relocate or expand globally. When we compete on these, we're not only competing with our neighbors next door, we're not only competing with other states, we are competing on a global market. We have 41 open that result in $14 billion in capital investment and 14 additional jobs. We have been shortlisted on seven of those. If we were able to receive all seven, that would mean $3 billion in capital investment and 980 new jobs. What number you don't see on here, we have hosted eight site visits. Seven of those were with companies that we were shortlisted on. What a site visit is, is when the company actually comes to Muskogee and we are able to showcase the property that we proposed to them. They look at the port, we bring them into the office, we give them a presentation, not only talk about workforce development but career texts, education systems and quality of life. Five expansion projects, we are working with five companies local on potential expansions which could result in $20 million of capital investment and 70 new jobs. And one point that I want to point out on here, many of you know that we have an announcement tomorrow with Captive Air.[1597.74] They are not in that number, that number was included in last year's presentation, is that is when the investment was made, this is the, tomorrow's event is that fruition of it all coming together. And one thing that I wanted to go back, and I would be remiss if I failed to mention this on the site visits. I said we had eight, that other site visit was directly with site consultants, we brought in GLS Strategies in April. We were able to host our Select Oklahoma Economic Development Professional Group and showcase Ruffer Village. The next day, GLS spent the entire day with us, looking at the community. That is like gold in our world, to have one-on-one time with a site consulting company. Sorry about that. On the next slide, these are our wins so far this year, and I would point out, we do have two months left, and we were shortlisted on seven projects and hope to have additional announcements. But as to date, we have six wins that have resulted in over 83 million in capital investment, 267 new jobs with an average wage of 48,000. One that I want to point out, CDS, CDS was originally located in Fort Gibson. Their main client was Refresco, Refresco decided to pull in-house their product line, we were at risk of losing CDS in the region completely. At the same time, Optomics was also leaving Muskogee, Jeff was able to connect CDS, we were able to move CDS here into Muskogee, into that building, retain the employees that were going to be lost. And I think another amazing story about CDS is they work with the Department of Corrections on the reentry program. So they are working with incarcerated women, those women are coming and being bused into CDS right now to work, and once they complete their sentence, they will have a full-time job at CDS. That's a huge win for this community. Another win for us was Muskogee Metal Fab, you may know that through a series of unfortunate events, we almost lost Muskogee Metal Fabrication. A Muskogee-based company was able to come in, bring in 3.3 million dollars of capital investment. They said they were going to bring in 22 new jobs, I can already say that they've hired their first seven. They are already making investments into Muskogee, and they are keeping the name Muskogee Metal Fab, so extremely excited about them. And then I'm going to, I may, I'm going to point out Valerick, many of you know Valerick was deeply impacted by the 2019 flood. They are coming back, they have worked with our office, as long as with the state, through the Business Expansion Incentive Program, or BEEP, to develop a foreign trade zone out at Valerick. That's going to allow them to bring in more material from South America. You're going to be seeing them start to ramp up quite a bit of activity, and we at the port are extremely excited to see that. Moving right along into workforce development, Sarah Nichols was hired in July as our Workforce Development Director. Sarah has sacrificed her time, and she is serving our country in the military. Sarah was promoted to officer and is in mandatory officer training, so unfortunately, she's not here tonight, but she's at a greater calling and serving our country, but she will be back in our office in January, so the next portion of this presentation I will be giving on her behalf. One thing I want to talk about is career awareness, October 2nd, we have the opportunity to take over 40 volunteers from local industry into schools around Muskogee County. We were in front of over 900 students, this is one of my most favorite events of the year. And we are educating those students on what manufacturing is, but also what type of opportunities we have in manufacturing, right here in our backyard, so that we can keep those students local when they graduate. We talked to them about career pathways, and is that a career tech pathway after high school, or is that a four-year bachelor degree? And what do those salaries look like? Really excited you'll see those pictures, those were taken this year at Hilldale Schools. Our local engagement, we had over 23 workforce-related events or programs. We are going to have another one this Friday, in conjunction with Oklahoma Works, we're hosting a job fair at their office from 9:00 to 12:00. And I also want to bring up our job board, there are currently 69 manufacturing jobs open on that website to date. GMMA, Greater Muskogee Manufacturing Alliance Scholarships, that organization has handed out over $25,000 in scholarships. In May of this year, they had, they raised $5,000, they divided that up amongst four students. Those students would typically not qualify for another scholarship. These students specifically expressed a desire to work in manufacturing, and they were awarded these scholarships. And then I would be remiss if I didn't talk about the great partnership with our city foundation and our Muskogee Means More Initiative. They are, I can tell you, I've worked in numerous communities across the state. I've never worked for a city that had a city foundation that believed in economic development as much as they do. Through the conjunction with the city of Muskogee, the foundation, the Muskogee Means More Initiative, and their Business Development Committee, they're going to be bringing an SBDC office into Muskogee, they're going through that interview process right now to hire a director, they're going to be located at Indian Capital Technology Center, and I can tell you, as someone who did small business and entrepreneurship for over a decade, I'm extremely excited to have SBDC in our backyard. And then through the Talent Committee, the Young Professional Organization was started and launched. That's a big business recruitment tool for us, to showcase that Muskogee is attracting young talent, and there is a professional network here available for them when they hit the ground running. And then of course, our Ready, Set, Move Program, where we had $250,000 allocated to this program. To date, we have funded nine, you can see their pictures up there on the screen. And then you can kind of see the map where they have relocated from. I can tell you, this is a huge competitive advantage for Muskogee, and it is critical that this is a program that we continue to keep in place. The desire and the competition for workforce recruitment is stronger than it's ever been, and we have to continue to be creative in the ways that we bring talent in. These nine, as you know, are hard to fill, they are filling hard-to-fill roles. They have an average wage that's above 110% of the average county wage, and they are required to purchase a home in the city of Muskogee in order to receive the $10,000 stipend. You can see the average wage of the nine that we've brought in so far is $73,000, that's an excellent livable wage. Not only are they investing in homes, you can see the average cost of a home right now that these nine have invested in is a little under $200,000. And then you can kind of see where they may even had someone from Muskogee, or Mexico, come into Muskogee. We do have two applications that will most likely get signed on this week. One is moving in from Wisconsin to work at IBI. Another one that has moved in from Pennsylvania to work at Dow Tile, and then we will have two additional pending that are waiting on, on finding a house to close on. This program, the application deadline is October 31st. So we are hoping and looking and seeking additional applications this week and part of next week. The next three slides are about our Wage and Benefits Survey. This survey was sent out in May, April and May of this year, and this was at the direct request of our local manufacturers. They were having employees that were leaving to go right across the street to make a quarter or more, and then maybe six, you know, months later, coming back to the original company. And they said, we need to be on an even ground. And so we sent this out to the 35 manufacturing companies in the county. 20 of those responded, which for those of you who have sent out surveys, a 57% response rate is pretty high, we were really excited about that. The 20 that were able to respond represent about 1,700 full-time manufacturing employees. A couple of things, I'm not going to go through this in detail, I just want to highlight that the average wage for a starting position in manufacturing in Muskogee is $16 an hour. And if you look at that graph, you can see that almost half of our workforce in manufacturing come from that 35 to 44 age range. 100% of the 20 employers that filled out this survey offer health insurance, with 95% offering dental and vision benefits. You can see there that almost 60% of employees have to wait at least a minimum of 60 days before their benefits kick in. And that roughly about, almost half of them, the average cost to the employee for those benefits is somewhere between 100 and 200 dollars. And on this last slide, the one thing that I want to highlight is under Education and Training. 90% of our 20 companies that filled the survey out leverage Indian Capital Technology Center, and of those 90%, 95% said that their training needs are being met. I do see the rest of that sentence that says soft skills, and we wouldn't have a survey if there weren't some things that we definitely still had to work on. But the fact that for the core base of that job, to do the job, 95% said that ICTC is meeting those training needs. And that's critical, and every site visit we had, they've asked what our relationship with our local career tech system has been. And we can effectively say, based on this, that yes, they are meeting the needs of our businesses. And then the last slide before I turn it over to Jeff. You know, earlier when we talked about new and emerging technologies, and we highlighted aerospace as being one of those new target sectors, we always think about, well, how are we going to be building our workforce pipeline, and what does that look like? In July, Sarah was able to apply for a $2,300 grant through the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission. And this was a grant that was catered through K-12 programs to start getting kids interested in STEM-related areas of growth. We will be able to purchase 30 drones, it will most likely be on a first-come, first-served basis. They'll get the drone curriculum, the drone kits, instructions on how to build the drones, and then they will build the drones as a group. This program is set to launch in April or May of 2024. And with that, are there any questions for me before I turn this over to Jeff to talk about infrastructure and site readiness?
I don't have a question, but I'll add a comment, that on the soft skills data, that's a national trend.
It is a national trend, yes sir.
So that others who are watching and observing tonight know that that's not generic to Muskogee. Technology has changed people's ability to be able to publicly communicate, when everybody communicates by text or by some form of handheld device, and so that's a national trend. But I'm glad that we're addressing it in Muskogee by leveraging our assets with capital ICTC. In addition to what you guys are doing at the port, to be certain that all of those partners are at the table to have those conversations and address their needs, so.
Mayor Coleman.
And thank you so much for all of your detailed information, particularly letting people know that we've added 270 jobs. Because where I want to get off on my soapbox sometimes, is when people say, there are no jobs in Muskogee, well, yes, there are. And we've added jobs additionally, giving them the wage that is comparable to living in Muskogee. And so that opportunity and those announcements need to be made and reiterated, especially when we look at what the port is doing to get those jobs here. Particularly with expansions, which is also a good thing, because that roots those companies in the ground in Muskogee, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Raises up a little bit here, Heather did a great job, she's been drinking from the fire hose now for two months, and you can tell she's taking it all in, but she did an excellent job there, Heather. So I want to talk a little bit here about site readiness, I know I'm kind of beating a dead horse with this, I've been before you before, and I'm going to keep doing that, because I believe it's that important for us to be competitive in the days ahead, to be able to recruit this new business we need and that we can develop, but we got to have that, those sites ready. So we're going to kind of review kind of where we're at today, and where we're going in the days ahead with site readiness. So the first industrial park I'll mention here is John T. Griffin Industrial Park, south of town, we all know where Dow Tile is. So you look over the last year and a half, almost two years, we've made, including the city, infrastructure investment there of almost $6 million for water sewer extension out there, this has helped us recruit new business. We've also done Industrial Access Road to that area, about a mile's worth, two new bridges, so pretty monumental there for that investment. Core Scientific is the one entity that had made substation investment and a lot of infrastructure there on their site. Over about $53 million so far. I will, I'll talk a little bit later about specifically Core, and kind of what that looks like then for the days ahead, as we all know, they had to file for bankruptcy, and so they're starting to actually come out of that. Targeting there, John T. Griffin Industrial Park, about 212 acres, that would be quote-unquote shovel-ready at this point. Specific to John T. Griffin Industrial Park here, you can see right there in the gray, that is where OG&E has built their substation. It's kind of like gold for us, I'll use that term, I mean, having 1,000 megawatts there has been a beacon for us to be able to try to attract some of these new businesses here that need those megawatts, specifically for traditional-type data centers. Core Scientific is the 60 acres there, rectangular shape to the right of OG&E's substation. And then directly south, you'll see a name up there, Project Bifrost, I am the one that named that, we can talk about that later. But that's 40 acres that we had recently worked with a company to sell that, they're wanting to do kind of like Core, a Bitcoin mining operation. They came in here when the price was very low, and they still seem very comfortable with this setup, so. Project Data, that large acreage there, it's 126 acres to the left, or the west of OG&E's substation there. That actually was purchased by a company called YZY Capital a few years ago, they subsequently have not done their development. So one of the things we try to do to safeguard our properties is put in there a development agreement, specifically with language, like a buyback clause. So we actually are in the process, the port is, of exercising that buyback clause, to be able to reacquire that, because right now, without that site for Muskogee, our largest developmental piece of land, one piece of track of land is about 47 acres. I will tell you, we've missed about 22 to 25 RFPs, I know we showed, Heather showed, we've submitted a lot of those, but we've missed several, because we didn't have that 100-acre site. So this will be really nice to have this on our books, to be able to target as well. Core, and then Red River Brick, so what does that local impact look like for these four specific projects, really quickly here? So Project Bifrost, I mentioned that one, they're looking at probably about a 75, really to about $144 million investment. That's between business personal property and then real property. Calling it Project Data, so we're actually talking to two different entities right now, we're in negotiations contractually, trying to see ultimately which one is more hungry for that 126 acres there, and to be able to utilize those megawatts from OG&E. What they've told me, and both of them have told me this separately, we think that site could house up to about a billion-dollar investment in a traditional data center. Job density, probably about 60 to 80 is realistic for what that is, but it would be pretty steady out of lower income for those taxing districts. Core Scientific there, I mentioned that they, you know, went, had the bankruptcy, they are starting to come out of that. We're supposed to have continued conversation here, but what they've told us is they would like to come back and continue some operations somewhere around Q1 of 2024. And then I'll mention Red River Brick, they are an existing manufacturer for us, they're a great company. There, they produce over 240,000 bricks per day, so pretty incredible, if you never got to see that operation, I encourage you to get that opportunity to see it. They hire about 60 full-time employees, and I say that to say, I'm going to show you, I think I have a picture in this slide, but West 53rd Street South, we have that opportunity to connect that and make that an industrial corridor with Industrial Access Road from US Highway 64 to US Highway 69, which would really greatly impact Red River Brick, and also their desire and wish to be able to expand in the next few years. So talked about some of the site readiness work that we've done there, John T. Griffin, this is what's needed. You can see there, those are those sites, the orange line that I've got there for you, it actually needs to extend a little bit more north. The Industrial Access Road really just goes to that northern tip of OG&E's 40 acres. So we need to be able to extend that Industrial Access Road all the way down on South 24th Street West, hit West 53rd Street South and take that to US Highway 64, that is Red River Bricks' operation in the lower left-hand corner. So I'm going to move on from John T. Griffin and talk a little bit about South Side Industrial Park, and you know, this is it's been a fun project to see this come to fruition, I know this property has been owned by the city for a little bit of time. And it's exciting that right now feels like it's that time that we're actually, you know, we're going to make some more improvements and things happen to really get folks and companies out here to this site. So what you're looking at there, that's a total of 226 acres, divided by US Highway 64. We did go out this past year as a port authority, we tried to bring in, just like you guys do, some of those state dollars, any of those federal dollars for infrastructure work. We got 3.16 million of state ARPA and prep funds brought back to help support these sites here. So far, Muskogee Communications is out there, they have built their facility, if you haven't been by there, roughly a million-dollar investment. As far as those 3.16 million dollars that I said we brought in from the state, the sewer project that we are working on with Burns-McDonald Engineering, it's about a 1.96 million a dollar that was ARPA funding. That's going to bring sewer, city extension, all the way to South Side Industrial Park, both the west and the east side. And so that was needed, we hear a lot, you know, those companies that are coming here, they need to be able to have that city sewer extension. So this gives you a totality on this picture here of John T. Griffin, and how you see the purple line connects down there to South Side Industrial Park as well, so that is a rail line, that's Port Muskogee Rail. What I've highlighted here is a trestle bridge, you see there in that picture. This rail currently, we haven't had any companies there, so it's been inactive. However, I'll talk about it in a minute, I've talked about it before, Project Heart, they are in need of this rail to be operational. And that trestle bridge, we got 1.2 million dollars from the state as well, to be able to help rehab that, it's about a 2.9 million dollar project. So when it comes to, you know, site readiness and having a roadmap, it just, you've got to take it step by step, and if you miss any of those steps, it really can bog down your momentum. And so with that, with South Side Industrial Park, you can see there's multiple jurisdictional wetlands is what we would call, so we had to get a wetland delineation assessment done. We have done that, we came back, sent that to the Army Corps of Engineers, they said, yes, you have two jurisdictional wetlands. So obviously, you got to, you can't build on those, you got to either mitigate that or build near them. And so with that, that allowed us to take another step towards site readiness at South Side that needed to happen to attract business. And that is, we found that there was an abandoned old gas well there. So we needed to get that plugged, so talked to the Corporation Commission, and we're able to get that taken care of as well. Had to do all that, just to get to the point of saying, we need to get a survey across this entire 144 acres, to be able to then develop a master plan, because you don't know how to divide that up without having that, so that is what we've done here. You can see that now, that's 200, roughly on this side, what we're looking at is 144 acres, you see there in the top-left corner, Muskogee Communications, 10 acres. And then how that could potentially be divided up with those jurisdictional wetlands, giving us seven shovel-ready sites, if we get that industrial loop. So I've talked about Project Heart, really exciting, very large project, potential of a billion-dollar capital infusion. Over the life of that, they're telling us, you know, between 800 to 1,000 jobs. We are, of course, contractually under contract with them for South Side West. They're on the west side of US 64, and then they actually have a, what's called a rofer, a first right of refusal on some of that southern acres on South Side East as well. If we get other interested parties, they either have to buy it, or let us sell it to somebody else. I'll mention project structure, I mentioned this before, but a local manufacturer that was really, I would just say, we were in jeopardy of losing, just due to the building that they're currently in, and the challenge they had there, and some of their suppliers that were in other locations. Went to them, what can we do to keep you guys here? They said, well, we don't know where we would go, we said, I think we have an answer for that, so we went and showed them South Side Industrial Park East, said, this is the site readiness work that we're doing in conjunction with the city in partnership. And the potential site there, you can see that located in the middle portion of your screen. So they're looking to be there about a 15, 20 million dollar capital investment, and retaining 35 full-time employees and adding another 20 full-time employees over the next five, three to five years, is what they've told me, so we're continuing those conversations with them to make that happen in the days ahead. This just talks about both of those projects, I've already talked about them, but that's that local impact. And then this is that infrastructure improvement that is needed, and so very thankful that the city, we got to come before you and talk about a TIF recommendation and be able to start that process to take care of this infrastructure here with that Industrial Access Road, making that corridor, the Industrial Access Loop at South Side East, and then the rail rehabilitation. I wish you guys could see this, I don't know if you can see it on your screens yet, but hopefully this shows some of the impact, it's kind of hard to see it for me here, but shows you just the different projects that we are working on related to John T. Griffin, related to South Side Industrial Park and the, and the projects, so it talks about the private investment total, if all those were to happen and come to fruition, and you know, over 1.1 billion dollars, 863 jobs, I put the low end on Project Heart, 800, I know I said it could be up to 1,000. Always like to be more conservative, and then it talks about the project costs to do those different infrastructure, site readiness needs there. And then where we went after those grant dollars and tried to turn over every stone to make that a reality, and then of course, in regards to the TIF. So what I would just say, just to end this, thank you guys so much for your time, and if you have any questions, happy to answer those, but site readiness is incredibly important. Heather mentioned having GLS here, and when they talked to us, they said, right now, with the way everything is across the nation, having those sites ready, having those megawatts that are available, having the sewer, the water ready to go, the natural gas extension, Industrial Access Road, it just brings you up to here as far as when we're talking to our clients, to be able to locate them in a specific- as far as when we're talking to our clients to be able to locate them in a specific community. So, we've been very fortunate with that. What I would leave you with is, is we need more industrial land. Again, if we get Lot 6 sold, our largest site is going to be 47 acres with 30 of that that is really developable. So, just food for thought.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
Hey Jeff, I had a question. Mr. Mayor, if I can be recognized?
Yes, you may.
Do you think it's a good idea to have a lobbyist at the, at the state that lobbying for business here in the city of Muskogee to direct some of that?
I I think we do an extremely good job with a small staff to be able to go to the state and have that relationship with our elected officials, whether it's the representatives or the the state senators, to build those relationships, whether it's for the Waterway or, as Heather mentioned, through Select Oklahoma, which is really that, those group of EDOs that get together, they actually lobby on our behalf as well. And so, we are part of those organizations, really being to pull our money together and leverage that better. I would tell you, we do have good relationships as well with the Department of Commerce. We build that with with several of those folks there to be able, and they they've, we've recruited them to come to Muskogee, come look at our industrial sites, make sure they're familiar with what we have to offer. And so, as they're talking to those folks and those companies and those site selectors that come in and say, hey, we need a site that's got 1,000 acres that have water access that in their head, it's going Muskogee. And so, I would say we're doing really well with that. We're continuing on our momentum from last year in 2022. And you can see that with with some of this recruitment effort. So, at this time, I I really, I mean, if you had a thought, I'm certainly open to that. But I I do think we're covering our bases pretty well there, Mayor.
Thank you, Jeff.
Other questions? Let me also say that on those, a lot of those potential projects on our end, if there are any development agreements or things that need to be addressed sooner than later, please let us know so that we can do that because I understand that timing is of the essence. And when these companies are looking for us, they want to be certain that we do what we need to do on our end and get them back a response in a timely manner so that they know we're not not considerate of their time.
Yeah, 100% Mayor. It's just the thing that we preach to these these folks and seems to make the difference is is partnership. And not only just to recruit you here, but then to continue to develop that partnership and take care of these these companies' needs. So, I think it just really speaks volumes when we're able to be prompt with them and and if we can meet their needs, do that in a timely manner.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, are we ready to move on?
Yes, sir.
Where have we missed clerk? Item number 12.
Consider approval of confirmation of the county commissioners' reappointment of Ernie Gilder to the Muskogee City County Port Authority and the Muskogee City County Trust Port Authority to serve a four-year term beginning August 30, 2023 and ending August 30, 2027, or take other necessary actions.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, as you know, the the port and, or the, I'm sorry, the county and the city both nominate board members to the Muskogee City County Port Authority. And then after they're confirmed by the nominating body, they're brought before the other body for consideration as well. Both these items fit that category that have been approved by the Muskogee County Commissioners. And I think you're familiar with Mr. Gilder. I don't know that I can answer any questions, but I know the the port has staff here that may if you have questions regarding his reappointment by the county commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Do we have any questions or what's the pleasure of the body?
May for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Perlin Boyani Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. The item passes. Item number 13.
Consider approval of confirmation of the county commissioners' appointment of Mike Webb to the Muskogee City County Port Authority and the Muskogee City County Trust Port Authority, replacing Daniel Miller to serve a four-year term beginning August 30, 2023 and ending August 30, 2027, or take other necessary actions.
Mr. Miller.
Similar to the last one, the county commissioners have appointed Mr. Webb to be on the Port Authority Board. And I know Port Authority staff is here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions on this appointment?
May for approval.
We have a motion and a second on item number 13. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Perlin Boyani Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. The item passes. Item number 14.
Receive presentation of financial audit for City of Muskogee Foundation for fiscal year 2022, 2023, and take other necessary actions.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, Mayor, members of council. The foundation has their audit for the annual fiscal year 2223. Nancy Gayden is here to present that on behalf of the foundation staff.
Hi, for those of you who may not know me, my name is Nancy Gayden and I work for foundation management. And I'm the accountant responsible for doing the books for the City of Muskogee Foundation. And I'm also a CPA. I'm licensed in both Oklahoma and Arkansas. So, on the, I'm going to hit the high points because this is sometimes boring to listen to, but in a nutshell, we have completed our audit ahead of time and we are, we have gotten the most favorable opinion that you could get. So, we got a clean audit. And that's the thing that you're looking for. So, we did not have any audit adjustments, which typically is not the case. But the financial statements that we presented in our board meeting were unchanged as a result of this audit. There was, we also did not receive any material weaknesses or significant deficiency comments. So, really, our audit could not have gone any better. And that's what you're looking for. And I will point out that on page three, our assets were roughly 144 million dollars as of the period ending June 30, 2023, which is virtually unchanged from 2022. We had a profit of 8.2 million dollars for the year ending June 30, 2023. And most of that is because of, we had realized gains from our investments of about 25 million dollars. But we did have unrealized gains, unrealized losses of 18.4 million. And that's a much favorable performance in 2023 compared to 2022. 2022 was a terrible year for almost everyone and we lost, we lost almost 9 million dollars in 2022. The other thing that I would want you to pay attention to is our statement of cash flows. It's presented on page seven of the audit report and we cash flowed, we added about 4.2 million dollars to our portfolio. So, we had ending cash of 7.2 million as compared to almost 3 million the year before. And I won't read all of the notes. You are certainly welcome to ask me any questions and wanted to keep it short. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions concerning this audit on tonight? Do we need a motion or is this a report? Thank you. Item number 15.
Discuss and provide direction to staff on an economic development plan that outlines budget, expensive, expenses, incentives, and related procedures.
Let me say in advance of Mr. Miller making his presentation that this is one of those items where Mr. Miller will present, council will have an opportunity to give feedback and allow him to come back with a more final presentation on November 6. Mr. Miller.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, at our September 25 city council meeting, the council voted to require staff to return in 30 days with an economic development plan that outlined, you know, budgeted, budget and best practices, incentives, et cetera. So, this is a 30-day report on that topic. So, I've got a short presentation to go through with you and then we can go through the existing policies as well as discuss future opportunities. So, those are the three big topics that that you requested that we discuss today. We'll go through those. We'll start with budget, the economic development budget from the city is 1.5 million dollars this year. By ordinance, this is 60% into operations, which amounts to $900,000 and 40% into our opportunity account, which is $600,000. And we'll go into some detail on those. This is what the operations account is budgeted for. Port Muskogee, our industrial development partner, receives contracted amount, as mentioned here. Main Street Muskogee, Retail Attractions, our retail consultant. Small business development, this is a partnership that was alluded to in the the industrial presentation from Port Muskogee that where we're contributing to adding a small division, business development center at ICTC that will help greatly with local entrepreneurship. And this was our participation in bringing that new employee to the city. We budget a transfer to the civic center, contract services, and then other operating expenses are how that account is used. The opportunity account is budgeted for $600,000. This afternoon, I've not had a chance to make a change to this slide since the 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 board meeting of the City of Muskogee Foundation that ended about 5:00 and we came over here about 5:30. The the current projects are two major economic, retail economic development opportunities that we have in the urban renewal area along Shawnee and the Three Corners area, we call it, along Shawnee and US Highway 69, where the city owns parts of those corners. And that, the current projects are debt service amounts. After today's foundation meeting, that number will be adjusted upward, but will still be under the $600,000 to pay for those existing current projects. The current opportunity account balance is just a little bit over 1 million dollars. And so, those are, that opportunity account is what we can use for financial incentives and it's outlined by ordinance. And so, that's what I would have you look at. What I've passed out is existing ordinances that you're familiar with. And I don't want to belabor them too much, but I do want to walk you through them because this is the framework under which any economic development plan would be, oh. Yes, please. If we've not made sure that those have gotten all the way down. It's ordinance 4198A as a, as outlined. And this is an existing ordinance that the city council has passed. Just the the first section, section A, talks about all the uses that we can use the economic development fund for. You know, number one priority, creating jobs and retain existing jobs for high-impact business projects. We can fund infrastructure. We can fund debt service for certain projects, job creation, marketing, infrastructure improvements. All those are allowed. There's two kinds of accounts. Section B talks about the general account, which is the operating account, which we've gone through. Section C talks about the opportunity account, which we've talked to as well, lists three different categories, A, B, and C for those. The the council has outlined a strategy that we should pursue, new high-skill, high-wage jobs. We can also use money to target development or redevelopment in the city's comprehensive plan, including blighted or urban renewal areas. We can also use it to make investments and projects that are unique or unequal contribution to development or redevelopment efforts in those cities. To make those decisions, council has to vote by a two-thirds majority of all members of the council to use money out of the opportunity account. The city council has certain criteria they placed upon themselves that they must evaluate, including jobs, quality of jobs, pay of jobs, a salary, capital investment made by the businesses. If if it's going to generate additional businesses coming in to the city as as a result. Also, they're, they're asked, they've asked staff to gather information on, is there a cost associated with this business? Would they require specialized police or fire protection, for instance, or would it result in tens of thousands of more cars coming down a road that isn't built for that, that might be, have infrastructure costs or increased water or sewer systems? So, that's outlined in our existing, existing council policy. We go through it. Section E talks about, oh, I would do want to highlight that the the opportunity account does anticipate growing so that it's not necessarily something that has to be allocated, you know, on a year-by-year basis. It has a limit of 5 million dollars. At that point, if if the council had let the opportunity account grow to that level, we would not, by ordinance, have more contributions to that. But it contemplates that this money could be spent as we go or it could be saved up for a very large incentive, according to the council's priorities. There are other possible uses of the economic development fund outlined in F. And that, you can see those for yourself, but those are not to be used as the routine basis. Lastly, the council on H has appointed a three-member subcommittee. It's made up of council members authorized to meet as a body. And so, that's also in this presentation. We can get to that here in a second. I wanted to talk, you asked me to talk about incentives. There are some incentives we've already talked about that are in the opportunity account. There's other incentives that the city has in our ARPA funds or in our special project fund. And I want to make sure that we talk about those. Currently, we have 928,375 dollars unallocated in housing, infrastructure incentives. These can only be allocated by the city council. We also authorized in our ARPA account, Southwest Zone Economic Development incentives up to $125,000 to encourage economic development in the Southwest Zone of the city. That money is still available as well. We also have the, well, I'll get back to that. This, the last thing on my my slideshow is the subcommittee. You asked me to talk about how committees are formed. Every city does things a little bit different. What the council has has put into ordinance is basically a member, an internal committee of council members to meet with internal city staff to go over economic development projects on a more informal basis that wouldn't require, you know, public notice because we're talking about things that are more, that aren't at a decision level stage, right? Anything that would have to be made as a decision level would come to the full body, obviously. So, this subcommittee is to be appointed by the council. We do not have an agenda item to do that tonight, but at such point in time as it's appropriate, that appoint, that committee could be appointed. Other communities have different models for economic development committees that include a lot of different organizations. And that would be a different kind of structure than what is proposed here. And so, you've asked me for for what other cities do. Sometimes they have, you know, all their economic development partners that have, that have a committee that they all, you know, formally work together on different projects. And that is something that may be contemplated by the council with this question. I'm not sure. So, those are the, those are the existing opportunities that we have. Those are our policies that are in place and our incentives that we have in place. And we have a lot of tools to move forward in economic development area. And I'm happy to discuss where we're at at this point and take direction or questions as to where we're headed next.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, counsel. I'm assuming that you just saw this as it was handed out and we need time to read this. Give you opportunity to provide your feedback on whatever direction we need to give, Mr. Miller, so that you can have your ample say in how this policy is developed going forward. I know that some of you have contacted me directly about the makeup of some of these articles and subtitles. And at the risk of having an hour-long conversation about it and you rushing through your thoughts, I'd rather give you time to have the opportunity to come up with them and send them directly so we could take this up appropriately. That would be my recommendation. That's it.
Sounds good.
Need a motion? If I need a motion, do I need a motion?
No, I don't think so. Just as always, my, my ears are open and certainly the mayor, you can coordinate whatever you'd prefer.
I think let's get it to Mr. Miller before the November 6 meeting. We can agree to do that.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'm hearing we'd like to have a follow-up agenda item on this at a special call meeting on November 6.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. We'll make sure that happens.
Thank you. Item number 16.
Consider, consider approval of ordinance number 4210A, amending the City of Muskogee Code of Ordinances, Chapter 90, zoning, Article 21, historic preservation, Section 90-21-10, application procedure by eliminating the time requirement for the Historic Planning Commission to review and take action on a certificate of appropriateness application or take other necessary action.
Mr. King.
Good evening again. So, this ordinance, we talked a little bit about, two weeks ago, Public Works Committee. And this is simply to amend Chapter 9021-10 to change the time requirement to process and call a special meeting for a certificate of appropriateness from five days to 10 business days. Sorry. Background of this is that we currently have five days written in our code. And five days simply is just not enough time to write a staff report and call a special meeting. and five days simply is just not enough time to write a staff report and call a special meeting to be in compliance of the code. And so we're requesting a change to 10 business days. That would give staff two full working weeks to do a report and call a special meeting and get everyone scheduled to come in. And so at this point, staff recommends approval of the ordinance and will take any questions on it.
Thank you, Mr. King. Do we have any questions? I just want to be sure I'm clear. We're amending, not necessarily eliminating the time requirement.
That is correct.
Okay.
By lengthening lengthening it?
Yes, we're making it longer.
I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Further discussion? Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl and Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery. Oh, sorry, Tracy Who's. Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
No.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number 17.
Consider approval of resolution number 2960, giving notice to the Secretary of the Muskogee County Election Board and calling a city general election for Tuesday, February the 13th, 2024, and a runoff election in the event respective candidates for the offices of mayor and council members do not receive a majority vote, with said runoff election to be held on Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024, establishing filing, withdrawal, and contest period, closing the 45th and 61st voting precincts, and establishing all the same pursuant to the Charter of the City of Muskogee and the revised state election laws or take other necessary action.
Ms. Bowden Hammer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This resolution is notice that we have have to provide per charter and state law, and this states our election dates, our candidacy periods, and all the other requirements that we have to meet in order to set our polling places and to close districts. We are asking that this be approved tonight so that we can abide by the deadlines, the state deadlines and the charter deadlines, so we can have this published and have notice sent out to the public.
Move for approval.
I've got a question. And this may not be a fair question. The 45th and 61st voting precincts, do you happen to know where they are? I'm curious.
Yes, one is over is the 45th is simply a fence line that is on the edge of the city towards Summit. And it is literally just the fence line.
Okay.
And so Mr. Stewart and I drove that fence line, and there are no no people living in that fence line.
It's just cows.
Just cows, excuse me, well, not even cows, because it's just a fence line. And then the second area is over, Mr. Stewart, what was the plant name?
It's over by the Calgary Calgary Chemical, far into Chandler, almost to the river.
And we also drove that precinct. And what happened there is that's all an industrial site, but at some point in time, someone plotted streets for that that area. There are no existing streets, there are no residents. We had to confirm that no one lived in those two areas.
Okay, that, thank you, and that's just cleanup work.
Yes, absolutely.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, other discussion. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl and Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Let me say for items 18, 19, 20, and 21, for those who are watching and in the audience, we are not banning fireworks tonight. This is a presentation for our consideration to look at what the options are as staff had been directed to do. Item number 18.
Consider approval of proposed ordinance number 4212A, an ordinance amending the City of Muskogee Code of Ordinances, Chapter 22, Business Regulations, Article 4, Fireworks, providing for repeal or severability and setting an effective date or take other necessary action.
Ms. Bowden Hammer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This proposed ordinance was drafted pursuant to direction to staff. One of the things that city council wanted to see was what it would look like to eliminate the use and sale of fireworks. So we drafted those proposed ordinances, which consist of 17, 18, 19, and 20. I'm sorry, 18, 19, 20, and 21 on the agenda. And we also looked at all the options. This is something to consider. For instance, Tulsa, and everyone has a packet on this, has banned fireworks and the sale and use of, as has Norman, Oklahoma City, Edmond, Owasso, Bartlesville, and Lawton. These cities that permit fireworks are Shawnee, Broken Arrow, Bixby, and Wagner. And some of them have permit requirements. We don't know what that would look like for our city yet. Age limitations such as 18 on buying fireworks, and whether or not you ban just use, you allow sales. There are also different ordinances and articles attached to your packet from various cities around us. And this is again, is something just for you to consider. The ordinance is drafted pursuant to direction to staff just so you can see what it would look like and entail to ban sales and use of fireworks in the city limits. So this is an item, we're not really looking for approval tonight, just providing you information, and the ordinance drafted as per direction, and happy to answer any questions.
Yes, I have a couple. Was there any consideration into civic groups or churches being able to have permits to do this work? I didn't see that in here.
Yes, actually, in the in the proposed ordinance, we have in there that that groups or public displays can still get permits and licensing to do that.
Okay. My next question is, we've got a big firework wholesaler retailer in town where people from all over this side of the state. Is it is it in the is it in the city limits or not?
There is one in the city limits, yes. And then there's also one out in the county.
Castle's in the county.
Okay, okay.
Do we know the financial impact of that?
We do not.
Can we get that?
I think that's a sales tax report. We should be able to get that.
Yes, we should.
Just to be clear, if that's what we're looking for is the sales tax generated from fireworks. Okay. We'll see if we can get that level of detail from our state reports, because those all come from the state.
May I be recognized, please?
Yes, sir.
So I read the ordinances, I know we got several item lines on this, but one thing that I would just like to see some other options also. I'd rather see what can we do to just provide consequences to those that use fireworks in an illegal manner versus punishing the entire city by taking away their right to celebrate the holiday? Because I feel like whenever we got a report from fire and police, the biggest thing was, yeah, they did it, there's really nothing we couldn't do. We couldn't take the fireworks, we couldn't do anything about it, like our hands are tied. How come we can't just look at a different way of of actually writing an ordinance where there's consequences if you break the law using fireworks? Instead of just banning them all the way across the city?
Thank you. Other comments on? I have a question. Are items 19 and 20 the same as 18?
They all address different different ordinances of the city. One of them actually does address Dr. Who's concern in making the illegal use of fireworks as a misdemeanor and then setting a resolution to set a fine for that, and then also defining fireworks as a as a dangerous weapon. So that all kinds of falls in, and that's where it's it's pretty wide open for everyone to look at it, give their comments, and provide further direction to staff. So we've kind of done an overlay of everything, and then we can we can definitely amend that or change that. For your preference.
The question I have to the council is, rather than hear three more items addressing the same concern, we've heard that we need to have this updated and amended to our liking. Do we need to go through 19, 20, and 21, or can we just strike them and go to 22?
We can strike.
I'm asking about it.
Yeah.
I'm comfortable with going on.
Okay. We're done with item number 18. With the council's pleasure, we'll strike 19, 20, and 21 and go to 22.
Consider approval of resolution number 2961, a resolution to declare bridge inspection responsibility by local government for compliance with national bridge inspection standards, providing for a selection process for an engineer and a contract duration beginning April 1, 2024 and ending March 31, 2026, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes, the City of Muskogee has quite a few bridges, which there's over 20, and and really, there's only a couple of what I really consider bridges, which is the Columbus Street overpass, the Viadoc on Court Callahan, and then there are several of them that are on Gulick. The rest of them are low water crossings, but they still have to be inspected like bridges. ODOT requires us to annually inspect these bridges, and they set forth a pathway for us to choose an engineer. So we can do that as staff and do interview processes, or we can simply let ODOT choose the engineer for us. They have shortlisted that engineers list way down to six different engineers. And what we have asked, or what we're asking of council is just to go ahead and let ODOTs make that selection for us. So they would choose the engineering service. That engineering service would go out and do these inspections and give us back a report. And just a little history on that, they do that annually, and when they give us that report, if there's anything out there that has major failure, they will have us shut that bridge down immediately. Majority of our bridges just have scouring issues or some type of debris up against the head of it. And Avery Rigney and I have decided that in sometime in the near future, we put together a bridge report for you and come up and show you all the bridges and and give you the last several years findings. We do recommend approval to let ODOT do the selection process for us, and I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Any questions, or what's the pleasure to body?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl and Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number 23.
Consider approval to purchase a 2024 international single axle truck with a Viking dump body, a Viking plow, and a Salt Dog 4.5 cubic yard spreader from Industrial Truck Equipment via Sourcewell Contract, 062222 VCM. Customer number 17934, and the amount of $205,944, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes, this is a budgeted item, although we only budgeted $180,000, but we are moving some items around with the manager's approval to cover this cost because we feel like this is a important need for the street department. The cost of vehicles is just continually going up, as is plows and spreaders, and that's why we were short several thousand dollars. One of the things that we do want to make sure we have is good snow and ice removal equipment. This will allow us to have a good snow plow with a spreader on the far east of town, a good one on the far west. And then we've got a bunch of smaller plows and trucks that that concentrate on the center of town. Did put a quick PowerPoint together for you to show you what we're looking at. That's a six wheel dump truck, that's the dump truck that we're looking to buy. That is, the city has many of those little trucks like that. And one of the reasons why we buy the smaller ones is they're easier to get around on some of these back areas. Reeves Edition is a good example where the 10 wheel dump trucks have problems turning. So this will be geared and fitted with the snow plow, which I know you guys have seen many times. And it will also have a sand spreader on it as well. We have continually have to replace those. We don't, we don't do it every year, but when you're dealing with the salt, now that goes through this, it does erode the metal over a period of years. So this will just keep our fleet in good operation, and I definitely hope we don't need to use them. But we will have them and we'll be ready if we do. So do recommend approval. One of the reasons why we did not go through purchasing committee, Avery has been searching these trucks out, and he found this one, and there's a quick buy on it. And if we don't get it, it could be up to a year before we get the truck. So we are recommending approval, and I'll answer any questions.
Any discussion for Mr. Stewart?
Move for approval.
I've got a comment, please.
Let's have a second, let me do things proper. Do we have a second?
I second it.
I don't have discussion, Mr. Cale.
Okay. My comment is, last winter, when we had some nice snows, and I got some new tires on my Jeep, I drove around, and I thought we did an excellent job of covering Muskogee and removing ice and snow from the streets. I thought it was remarkable.
So I appreciate that comment, and I want to give Mr. Rigney some of that credit. We actually went and purchased last year in our capital purchases a salt brine mixer. So we were able to mix that salt brine a whole lot better than we have in the past. In the past, it's been kind of guesswork. But they're making some advancements in that program, and and I'm proud of them. Thank you for recognizing.
It it was obvious. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, other comments? We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl and Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Let me say in advance of reading item number 24, some of my peers have asked and apologized for not having had their questions addressed to the staff in a timely manner. And I want to also say to the staff, we appreciate your work, and we will never have an opportunity where we try to openly castigate a question to staff in a manner that is embarrassing to them or to their work. But I will be asking that we have another time to give the ones who called me, the council, time to ask their questions. Mr. Miller. I'm sorry, Ms. Tammy.
Consider approval to allow the city manager to negotiate and execute a consulting service agreement and business associate agreement with Alliant Insurance Services for the purpose of providing broker services for employee health benefits as recommended by the City of Muskogee Health Insurance Committee, or take other necessary action.
Ms. Eaton.
Mayor, members of council. Per city council request, in the spring of 2023, the City Health Insurance Committee sought proposals for a brokerage consulting firm. The request for proposal was posted on July 21, 2023. The deadline for submitting a proposal was September 1, 2023, at 4:00 p.m. Seven responses were received from various brokerage firms in Oklahoma and surrounding states. Responses were received from Alliant Insurance Services, which is our current broker, NFP, Rooney Insurance, Marsh and McLennan, McGriff, Lucked Insurance Group, and Municipal Health Solutions slash JTS. Municipal Health Solutions was disqualified for not complying with RFP requirements. NFP and McGriff filed incomplete proposals. After a review of the responses received, a committee comprised of Chris Cummings, IT Director and Insurance Committee Chairperson, myself, Susan Ross, Payroll and Benefits Administrator, and Insurance Committee Secretary, Insurance Committee Members Jared Havens, Tammy Tracy, Nick Frizzi, Lance Whitman, and Brandon Bycroft, scored the proposals with Alliant and Lucked Insurance Group scoring the highest. The committee interviewed both companies and voted 6 to 3 to select Alliant Insurance Services, our current broker, due to them having the best proposal. Alliance advantages over other groups included a flat per employee per month fee with no commissions on supplemental policies and no additional fees for reporting. Staff and Insurance Committee recommend approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Eaton. Based on what the comments I have received from members of the council who wanted to have the opportunity to ask questions when they did not, and so their apology, they did want more time to review some of the numbers without having a back and forth on camera with you guys. So I'm going to ask if this body will allow us to vote on this item on November 6 so that we could be done with it, but give the council a clear olive branch that we want your questions to be asked and answered before that time so that we could vote on this item and move on. We fine?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Now, Katrina, I think I do need a motion to.
You do need to table it to a date, sir.
Motion to table to November 6, as discussed. We have a motion and a second, other discussion. Roll call.
I'm sorry, who made the second? Thank you. Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl and Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item number 25.
Discuss and provide direction to staff in consideration of amending City Council Policy 3 dash 3 dash 5 holiday date policy to include Columbus Indigenous Peoples' Day as a holiday observed by the city and take other necessary action.
I had said on last week, last meeting, rather, for the council and staff to remind me to keep my word that we would consider Columbus and Indigenous Peoples' Day a holiday. The indigenous people, Native Americans of our community in Oklahoma are greater than any other presence for any other city that I've lived in. And I think it's no more than right that we observe this as a holiday. My friend, longtime colleague, Councilor Ivory Van is here. Let me recognize him before he speaks that this was an agenda item and a thought that he had years ago when he was on the council. And for whatever reason, we just got sidetracked and it never got on there. But I am happy to make this recommendation to council tonight. And before we move forward, he had signed up to speak. So former Councilor Van, I'm going to invite you to the microphone and give us your name, and you'll have five minutes.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Mayor.
Evening.
City Attorney and City Clerk. It's good to be back home. But since I've been gone, I'll say this before I get started, so I'll get my one second in. Since I left the council, I've been blessed, and when I left, I had three grandchildren. Now I have five.
I have five. And so God has blessed me and like I said, I'm enjoying my retirement and just enjoying life. And council, the timer's not working. It's broken. Oh, I'm sorry. So Tammy's, Tammy's keeping it on her phone, but go, go ahead. I didn't want you to look at five and think. Okay. Yeah. Go ahead.
Well, I come up here for the night, um, back years ago when I was on the council, a gentleman named Mike Tobro. He was the one that brought it to my attention that, about the Indigenous Peoples' Day. And so he's the one really should get the credit for it. And I tried, been trying to get in contact with him, but I lost his number and I can't pick him up on Facebook. But I believe, like I said, the mayor said, really, he said it all. The Indian community here in Muskogee, Oklahoma, and all, all through Oklahoma, I know all the five, I know a lot of people in the five civilized tribes, chiefs, councilmen, cause I go to the intertribal meetings. And also I participated, we've been doing it, I think, Mayor, about six years, Indigenous Peoples' Day. And we had it this time at the Martha Doots King Center. And if you hadn't been the one, you really need to go cause you learn a lot about the Indian culture. I learned how to make baskets and how to shoot a bow and arrow pretty well. Just different things. And just, you know, get out of your own level. Because like I say, I have ties with the Indian Indigenous Peoples' community. And like I say, I still go down here to Creek Community Center, right down the road there. But I think this ought to be a holiday for the Indigenous People because they were here in, in Oklahoma. And like I said, uh, I just, I'm passionate about this as I am Robinson Park. Because I believe the Indigenous Peoples deserve it. Because like, so you can see what Cherokee Nation does here in Muskogee. I mean, also you can see what Creek Nation does here in Muskogee. And if you drive around Muskogee and you look at the tags, three tribes you will see. Choctaw, Creek, and Cherokee, right here in Muskogee. I don't, I, I haven't seen Ch- Chickasaw, or the other one, but, um, Seminole. But I do know a councilman that was Seminole Nation. So I would please, I would please wish you would have voted to make Indigenous Peoples' Day a holiday every October the ninth for here, for our citizens here in Muskogee, Oklahoma. So the government recognizes them. And so this is kind of like something I didn't finish when I was on the city council, that I wish y'all would finish tonight for me. And I greatly appreciate it. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Van. My motion is to approve as presented in the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl and Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number twenty-six.
Consider approval of a new council policy one dash fourteen regarding council management relations or take other necessary action.
Councilor Stout, Who's, and Boyati Craig.
So this is, uh, our item that we brought forth that we spoke about this a few times in executive session. And this is, uh, as Councilman Craig, uh, Cale said earlier, that, you know, we were, as employers, we need to have policies in place on how to deal with our employees. And what this does, this puts a committee in place and policies to how we can handle any complaints or move forward or employee contractual obligations or negotiations to move forward. And, uh, I hope you guys all had a chance to review this committee, I mean, view this document so we can move forward with the creation of this committee. And my motion is to present as, is to move as presented.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Yes, I would like to thank the committee, uh, for the work they've done up until this date. Uh, they've taken it serious and they've done a good job and I suspect they'll continue to do a good job.
Other comments? Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl and Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number twenty-seven.
Received report from staff is directed by the finance committee on, excuse me, on October ninth, twenty twenty-three, as it pertains to community responses to gun violence and violent crimes by juvenile offenders, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, at the finance committee, a couple of weeks ago, the council did vote to direct staff to work with certain community representatives to discuss potential programs to reduce gun violence, especially among juvenile offenders. Chief Teehee, uh, and his Muskogee Police Department, of whom we are all very proud, uh, did set a meeting up and, uh, is here to report on what, uh, was discussed and, and opportunities for us to address these issues.
It'll be a short update, but a, uh, positive one nonetheless. Uh, we had a meeting last Friday with a, what I believe to be a very capable, uh, organization group from, throughout the community, um, that I believe, uh, we had good discussions, good ideas, good thoughts about things. We're gonna continue to meet, uh, and hopefully bring some more, uh, ideas and thoughts. Um, you know, the one thing we talked about was it's, it's not an easy thing to take care of. It's not an easy thing to fix. Uh, but I think with the people that are a part of this group, we have the ability to, uh, address that. Uh, the other thing, one of the things that came out, I know Ms. Cranford was gonna, uh, speak on this, but I almost still her thunder a little bit. But, uh, the building that you all, that the city of Muskogee gave to Reverend Weber, uh, he has got a group, an organization project, uh, going on there on Wednesday nights that, um, I believe will, the police department will be a part of as well. But it, they call it the neutral zone. And what he, what he does there, um, and I'll give him a lot of credit if, if you're able to pull it off, cause it's not an easy thing, but is to bring, uh, two sides together, uh, to have discussions, uh, which is obviously a fitting name when you talk about the neutral zone because it's where you bring a, if you have conflicting groups or, uh, families or whatever the case may be in a community, have the ability to bring them together, uh, in almost like a mediation type situation. Uh, so very excited to hear about that. That's the first I'd heard about it was on Friday. Uh, so that is from the building that the city, uh, had donated. Uh, so very excited about that possibility. Uh, and very excited about the very capable group that we have, uh, going together to address the, uh, gun violence as well as our juvenile issues. Be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for, uh, Chief Teehee? We do have one resident, uh, assigned to speak to us tonight. Let me bring that speaker up. Thank you, Chief Teehee. Melody Cranford, if you've come to the microphone, give us your name and you'll have five minutes. And remember the timer's broken, so we're keeping time up here.
I will. Good evening, Mayor Coleman and members of the council. So I am standing to give the community side of our meeting. Uh, we had a wonderful meeting and I want to thank you for, um, your expeditious efforts to help us combat this, uh, public health crisis. So one of the things, Chief has already talked about, the neutral zone. We're working really hard to partner with them to do some things from community organizations like the NAACP and, um, I also direct the Muskogee Concerned Citizens. We have partnered through those two organizations with Global Life to make sure that we have child-safe kits and that we also have Project Child-Safe Kits for guns. And so what we're trying to do is, uh, as a proactive approach is educate our parents on how to, uh, lock up their firearms to make sure that they double check, to make sure that they are not left in vehicles. Some of the, um, altercations that we have had, uh, referred to us were parents leaving the firearm in the vehicle, young people taking the vehicle and then knowing that the firearm was in there and just using it or pulling it out to, uh, kind of like show it off and some of those things. So we're trying to curtail some of those things. We are also partnering with Judge Smith to provide some, uh, wraparound supports for repeat offenders. That was something that, uh, we kept talking about. We, because we don't have any facility in place, these repeat offenders know that they are free to go. And so to provide some wraparound supports through the neutral zone and some other efforts. And, um, we also want to, um, talk about some green spaces in the city of Muskogee. One of the things that we know is that, um, some of these, uh, communities where violence is prevalent, they have designated green spaces, kind of like Depot Green, but they're, um, places for soothing and that these young people could meet with counselors, meet with pastors, meet with other people in our community to make sure that they have readily available resources. So those are some things that we are providing through the community service because we wanted to make sure that we did our part to, uh, serve along with the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cranford.
You're welcome.
We have one resident sign to speak to us tonight from the general comments section. Um, it's Pat Casica. You'll come and give us your name and you'll have, uh, three minutes.
Hello. Uh, thank you for, uh, passing the Indigenous Peoples' Day as a holiday. As a, as a Muskogee Creek Nation Indigenous woman, I say thank you. And, um, speaking of Indigenous, um, I want to address this to everybody, but this was a quote from Ms. Melody Cranston from last, the last meeting on October the ninth, um, with the term people of color. Um, the Indigenous people have come up with a, or a, the correct anagram, I guess you would call it, is BIPOC. B-I-P-O-C, which means black or indigenous people of color. That's the correct term now. So, um, I guess I'm ready for you to start the clock.
We started when you started speaking.
Oh, you did? I was, well, I didn't want to, I just wanted to say all that first because I will have to read really, really fast. Uh, there is much concern over Muskogee's youth in light of the recent events and there is a great need for crisis intervention and a detention center. I agree one-hundred percent that they are needed, but there is a segment of the youth that are overlooked. These are the exceptional youth in Muskogee that are above average. They have good grades, they are conscientious citizens, and they have never been in trouble with the law. And within this segment, there are students who live in dire poverty where drugs, alcohol, violence, and mental health issues abound. However, these exceptional youth are ready to accept the responsibilities of college or vocational training, but they are lacking the resources to access a better future. How can Muskogee help these exceptionally mature students? Considering emancipation is an idea that I came up with because, um, there's such overcrowding in the schools. Um, it's hard to concentrate. They may come from a home that has violence and drugs and alcohol. And it's very hard to do well in school when you have this constant stressful, um, thing going on in your life where it's chaotic at home and it's also chaotic at school. Um, there would be a, uh, safe place for them once they were emancipated. This would be a project that Muskogee would have to take on. Uh, there are potential sites in downtown Muskogee that may be reconstructed into adequate living quarters. It would bring new life to this area and jobs would be easy to access on Main Street and West Halt-Moggie with the advantage of the police nearby and close to school bus routes. They would attend school as always and have a plan for high school graduation and college. These individuals would work a certain amount of hours to provide for their needs. Since most students receive breakfast and lunch at school, dinner would be on their own. They would have access to food pantries and possibly qualify for SNAP benefits. Rent and utilities would be paid for by grant or scholarships. Once they graduate and enrolled in college, the program would end for them. It would create residential counseling, security, and maintenance jobs. Living in a dormitory would allow them the independence they need to work and transition to college would reduce the cultural shock of campus living. This may not be an option, but Baycon College is closed due to financial problems. United Katuah Band of Cherokees would need to be approached to find out if this type of program would be in interest to them. Time is running out for the youth. It's life and death, not only for the perpetrator, but innocent victims as well.
Ms. Casica, your, your time's up. But let me, let me offer something to you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, if we have this as an agenda item to go into maybe a little further detail, um, you can sign up to speak, uh, on the agenda item. You'll have five minutes and that will give the council an additional five minutes to enter into a dialogue with you about your program. And I think that would be fair because it sounds like some good information and I don't want you to just leave and not have presented it all.
Okay, um, these are just thoughts, or actually it's kind of a dream, or it's a idea that I don't know how it would work out, but if we could come together and talk about resources, that maybe we might be able to come up with a plan, uh, to help these students. Because these are the students that I have a heart for. I have a heart for the other students as well, but they have to make the choice to whether or not they want to succeed.
Yes, ma'am. So we'll have that, I'll, I'll have an agenda item on November sixth.
Okay.
When you come back and you have more time to talk about it.
All right. And would I be able to bring a speaker with me who has more knowledge in this area?
They can sign up as a speaker and we'll acknowledge them as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. That was our last item for tonight. We are adjourned.